Hi, how are you doing today?
All right, okay. Where's mine? Okay, I think we're on the internet. All right, good evening, everyone. The call this meeting is at seven oh two P M. Adequate notice of special meeting was given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act by advertising the special meeting notice to the official newspapers, providing an agenda, topical agenda to the newspapers, and posting a copy of the agenda for the call. Would you please draw the flags? Sam, could you please save the roll call?
Councilmember Burger.
Here.
Councilmember Darkey.
Yes.
Council President Nita.
Here.
Member Ryan.
Here.
Councilmember Updike.
Here.
Councilmember Warren.
Here.
So to kick off our meeting this evening, we're going to have a special presentation. Some time ago, the council had awarded a contract to Collers Engineering, and we have procured the services of Maurice Prase, who is an expert in traffic safety, to help us take a look at the Kingwood Avenue intersection where the county road comes in by the National Hotel, and to report back his findings to the Traffic Safety Advisory Committee. The Traffic Safety Committee Advisory Committee has reviewed the draft report and supported it, and we're now making available to the public. It contains a number of recommendations for short term, intermediate, and long term. And with that, I'd like to welcome Maurice and have him come forward and present that plan to the public. And we'll also make sure this report is available on the borough website.
Good evening, Mayor. Thank you very much for having me. A member of council, it's good to be here. Members of the audience, I'm very pleased to spend your minutes with you and with everybody on the study. Let me first give you a little background about myself and about the study. I'm a traffic engineer. I've been doing this for thirty nine years. I've worked for the public sector and the private sector. And safety is one of the things that I focused on throughout my whole career over the years. But safety, vehicle safety, and coming up with solutions. So Mayor and council came to me a few weeks ago and asked me to look at the intersection of Race and Kingwood. And they asked me to analyze it, observe traffic, collect data, and make recommendations in terms of how do you make the intersection safe? Before I start, I would tell you that when I first came to the intersection, my first reaction was, a lot has been done already. Normally, I get assignments and I go into the site and I find that a lot needs to be done. But here, I was pleased to see that over the years, there's been signs, there's been marking, there's been flashers, there's been a lot that the town has implemented to improve the vehicle safety, but mostly to improve pedestrian safety, which is the focus of the study. So with that, I have a slide, a presentation. It's not very long, by the way. You will not hear more. I think it's only nine of those slides. And I made it pretty easy. So the first slide is just a mission statement. I apologize that you have to turn your heads, but of my company, we pride ourselves on serving the community. The company is called Non-Hogues, Engineering and Design. It used to be called Mesa Consulting. It was founded in nineteen eighty four. I've been with the firm for about twenty five years. So these are the people you're dealing with. My picture and name is on one side, and then your engineer is a builder. He's not here tonight. He has another meeting he's attending. So I did a field investigation, and actually, this is one of the few field investigations that I do that I actually So what I did on Memorial Day weekend, I told my wife, you and I are going to French Town. We sat down. And we came up here, and we spent actually most of the day in French Town. We started, we sat in front of the hotel. There's a little porch. We had coffee there. And in the meantime, I'm observing traffic. And then I told her to take a walk while I do the scientific stuff, do actual counts for cars and pedestrians. And then this really helped me get a feel, put it down. I do know French Town, but I think you've been in French Town before. Actually, I've done traffic studies years ago, maybe ten fifteen years ago, for different things happening in French Town. So I'm not good at French Town, but I wanted to take a new look at the town. And then for the rest of the day, we actually walked up and down, walked down Harrison here. We just experienced the whole town. So what I did is I collected what we refer to as existing condition inventory. So we wanted to know what's out there. Every sign, every piece of pavement marking, every electrified signal. I made a note of that, so we know what we had. And then I took traffic data for pedestrians and for vehicles. And I'm sitting there, I just observed the traffic coming and going, how people are behaving, how pedestrians are behaving, their lack of comfort, and so on. I was at a little disadvantage from a data perspective because the bridge is closed. So the traffic coming in on Kingwood, making a left to go on Race through the bridge, that traffic is most likely less than normal because the bridge is closed in that direction. But it's okay. I got enough data and I observed enough traffic patterns that I was able to complete the study. So what we have right now, we have what we call an always stop sign. It means anyone who comes to the intersection stops. We have a flashing signal. We have high visibility crosswalks. High visibility is when you have more than just the two lines. We call it high visibility, and there are many ways to make them higher visibility. And then we have in-street signage. They come and go. Today, I saw the sign was pulled back a little bit. This is the sign that is placed in the middle of the roadway, and it is plastic and it's forgiving. It gets hit, and unfortunately, the town will have to replace it once every four weeks, five weeks, six weeks, whatever. So these signs are not permanent, but they do help slow people down, and they do add a little bit to the safety of the crosswalks. There are pedestrian warning signs. Actually, you can see some of them in this picture here, the pedestrian warning signs. There are, also, there is a speed feedback sign. So as you're coming on Kingwood, there is a sign that gives you speed and flashes. And actually, on the other side, on the end of twenty nine, there are two such signs also alerting vehicles when they're going faster than they should. So I noticed that at that intersection during one hour, and that was a Saturday, that was approximately between eleven and twelve, which is the right time to take pedestrian data. Right, because midday on a Saturday is the highest, is we call that a peak hour for pedestrian traffic. So I counted a little over a hundred and eighty pedestrians using the intersection. So this picture, I'm standing here at the gas station and taking a picture. In front of me was the antique store. And you could see people walking actually inside the store, inside the frontage of the store, where you have the antique display, and then, and then coming out to continue their walk. A lot of individuals actually walk up Race after making that turn. And some cross, there were the, the gas station. I also took vehicle accounts, and I noticed that at some point, the queuing of cars was up to six vehicles. But again, the queue could be more on a normal day when the bridge is open. So if you have seen eight or more, that would be the reason. But I could tell you what I have observed. So this is a depiction of the data collection that I, that I took. The exhibit to the left is vehicles. The exhibit to the right is pedestrians. So as far as vehicles coming into the intersection, the volume is high, but not very high. It's what I expected, actually. I would point your attention again to this left turn from Kingwood onto the Race. It's forty eight vehicles. That's most likely higher when the bridge is open. So I took that into consideration. But then let's look at the pedestrian traffic. So in front of the hotel, you've got thirty six pedestrians that cross. That's in one hour. The cross also happened with the exact same number, thirty six people crossed from the hotel towards the antique shop. And fifty two pedestrians crossed between the antique shop and the gas station. But forty seven actually made the right turn from in front of the antique shop, going up on Kingwood, going on the bridge, and maybe to go home or somewhere else. So there was a, a pretty healthy, significant pedestrian activity at the intersection. So what do we do? How do we improve the safety of pedestrians? So to improve pedestrian safety, we need a few elements. You need cars to drive slower. We need cars to stop. You need the pedestrian walkway, crosswalk, to be well marked and very visible to both pedestrians and vehicles. The vehicles from far away needs to see that there is a crossing here, but also the pedestrians need to see a very clear, defined walking path. So what I'm recommending as a, as a short-term treatment to the intersection is to do a ladder type crosswalk. Now, I give you an example of the three common types. You have the regular one with the two lines called transfers. You have the longitudinal bar, because these bars are longitudinal, all traffic. And then you have the ladder, which is a combination. Now you have the longitudinal type, which is great for pedestrians, but pedestrians see the bars. But if you're driving a car, and let's say you're coming up on the screen, you see dots. Each bar that is very visible for the pedestrian has a significant bar. For a driver, it looks like a series of dots until you get close to it. And that's why I'm recommending to combine the two and do a ladder type. Keep this, but put thick white lines on both sides, eight inch white lines on both sides. This way, a car will see the crosswalk much better, having the longitudinal lines and also the transverse signs. So that's a short-term recommendation. It's an easy recommendation to do. I'm also recommending to keep up the pedestrian signs that we're using today. Now, there is one of them, but it's actually about maybe a hundred feet or so from the intersection, maybe a little bit more. If the public works department in town feels comfortable doing these signs, and if the town feels comfortable also replacing them on the break, I think additional signs at the crossings at Race and Kingwood would really improve the safety of pedestrians because cars get intimidated by those signs. They're in the middle of the road, even though they're plastic and they're very forgiving. When you're driving, you want to slow down because you don't hit the sign because it looks imposing when you look at it from twenty or thirty feet away. And of course, some maintenance to repaint some of the walkways, and an additional treatment in front of the antique shop. And I think right there, I think we need to do most of the improvements. That area in front of the antique shop, which, in my observation, more than half the pedestrians do not use. They ought to actually go inside the antique shop and walk among the antique displays to make your crossing rather than walking on the marked path. And the reason is, the marked path is close to traffic, and while it is visible, it could be improved, and I'll show you how. So this is an aerial shot of the intersection to orient you. This is Kingwood. This is the gas station. This is the antique shop. And this would be the hotel up beyond the screen a little bit. So I'm talking about this walking area that looks like a crosswalk in front of the antique shop. Now, right below it on the screen, right here, there is a little fence that the antique shop installed. And more than half the pedestrians actually walk right in here, between that fence and the building, and not on the actual crossing itself, the actual pedestrian path. And that's where I think the town could make some improvements, some short-term and some long-term. The short-term improvement will consist, okay, by delineating the edge of the roadway and making this walking area feel safer because now you have an end of travel lane and you have a walking area. Without that line, it feels like you're walking right next to cars, and there's no buffer. And I walked it myself, and I felt this way. I felt that, you know, I'm, I'm walking very close to cars. And the way cars feel on the roadway, instead of having eleven or twelve feet of travel lane, they have fifteen or sixteen feet, or even more, of cartway. So by providing that very simple solution, an edge line, you give the road the, the appearance of being narrow. You guide driveways to stay toward the center of the road and not the way. And you give pedestrians more area to walk. In addition to that, we can highlight this walking area with something a little bit more bold to also achieve everything else I've been talking about for the last five minutes. Now, these are the short-term improvements. I'll get to the, now, on a long-term basis, we're looking at the same intersection. I zoomed in. This is the antique shop. You see some of the antique displays here. So as a long-term improvement, I'm recommending that we actually build a race sidewalk, like a traditional race sidewalk that is four to six inches higher than the pavement, dedicated for pedestrian activity. And this makes sense because, as we discussed earlier, this is the busiest corner at the intersection. Whether people are using it to cross one way, to cross the other way, or to actually walk alongside that corner to continue on Kingwood, this is the busiest. This can carry over a hundred pedestrian in a busy hour on a, on a busy day. So it makes sense for the town to invest and, and build this walking area. And then the mayor asked me to look at different things, to also look at the walking area between the end of this depiction here and all the way down to the pharmacy. Right now, there are some, some lines, but that's another project that I do have in mind for some recommendations in that regard, potentially to make the whole walking seamless. You know, if you're going from the, along Race, from the pharmacy to the antique shop, where you can continue straight on that turn, we want that walking area to be intuitive and seamless. So this will entail doing curb sidewalk. And in terms of midterm and long-term improvements, we could think about raising. This is not short-term. This is not to be done in two weeks or three weeks. The rest of the stuff that I talked about earlier can be done quickly. The paint's out and the signage can be done in a few weeks. This needs a little bit more time, a little bit more design, even though it may appear very simple to you to just raise the crosswalk, but it's not. There are drainage issues with the water goings. There's some design issues that need to be investigated before such treatment is implemented. So I'm recommending that we look at raising this crosswalk the same way they're raised next door. Actually, I drove it today. It looks pretty nice. I hope you guys like it. I hope it's the same way, that it, it looks good. And actually, it slows people down, and that's the whole purpose behind it. And then, which is something you're already doing, to continue and strengthen the immunity outreach program, maybe do it here with schoolchildren, parents, or anybody else that lives in town, likes the town, and is interested in learning more about safety and about how to walk safely in town. And I believe this is the last slide. Yep, I hope I didn't bore you. And now, if you have any questions or comments, I'll be more than happy to do this.
Are there questions from the council? Will the proposed sidewalk also be raised?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry, what was the question?
Proposed sidewalk.
Yeah, I'm assuming. Between four and six inches.
Okay, that's, yes. Additional questions from government?
I don't think we do have a comment. I just wanted to thank you for your time and working with our committee because we met for several, several meetings, and you presented this to the committee, and we walked through some of the, the proposals. So appreciate your patience and letting us talk to you and and making us feel part of the process and changing things more appropriately, so.
Thank you. Like I said, actually, it's a joy. And as an engineer, I don't get too many opportunities like this to do something I like to do. So thank you.
I want to echo the council president's comments. Really appreciate working with you. I think it's, it's a good document that'll help us work with Hunter County since it says their intersection coordination of any future engineering and repairs there, as well as pursuing any potential grant opportunities, which is how we fund a lot of infrastructure in this town.
Yeah, and to jump on, we have already started conversations with the county to look at the traverse line addition for your recommendations.
I think there's a couple of public comments or questions if you'd like to answer those, Maurice.
So my, I have a question, please.
Say your name for the record, please.
My name is Tristan. We're helping. I'm the owner of the antique shop at twenty six Race Street. And I've listened to the conversation, and the one question I have is, what do you, when you start saying things like a raised curb and things like that, I'm trying to figure out like where your base elevation comes from. I mean, it's a little ambiguous to just say raised curb. Okay, because as the owner of that property, you know, I have to keep my interests open because at this point right now, and as in the past, there's two bayfront doors on that property. So obviously, if you did a raised curb, there would, you know, there would be interruption in using the building depending on what the eventual use was. So I'd like to get a little definition of what you consider a raised curb, you know, as well as the rest of the residents on the street and, you know, water and other factors like that.
Okay, thank you for the question. So while you use the word interrupt, actually, it's almost that everything we're doing is to not interrupt and to make pedestrian mobility better and safer, whether they're going to a store or they're going to a coffee shop on the street, anyway. So the whole purpose here is actually to facilitate the movement of pedestrians and not the other way around. So in terms of your technical question, whether, we don't know whether it's going to be, I mean, I threw numbers. I said four to six inches, maybe two inches. That's something that will be determined based on the elevation, like you said, based on the elevation on the site, on the street, based on drainage. There are a lot of factors that need to be considered to engineer that area and make it seamless with the rest of the lane and make it functional. So that is the next step, is to look at engineering it and trying to figure out what's the best way of doing it in terms of elevation and the slope, there's a width, there's a variety of factors here. But thank you for the question.
I think there's a question on that.
I was just wondering, like, this town mentioned a little driveway into the gas station, which can be a problem since people start crossing there and cars are, you don't know if they're turning into the gas station or instead of Race or, you know. It's just so that it's been so minimal.
So not that it wasn't mentioned, this, of course, was a big part of the investigation. The challenge is when you have an existing driveway, it's pretty impossible to close it down. It really causes issues with the business. So what we do is we try to work with it, like we're working with the antique store, trying to develop something that improves pedestrian, pedestrian safety, but keeps the functionality of the businesses, you know, as they should. So we're trying to harmonize pedestrians and businesses. So as far as the driveway, I looked at it, and if I'm designing a new gas station, it wouldn't be that designed, but it's existing. It's been there for years, years, and years. We have to work with it and develop something that is complementary or, or that is, that works with the existing features, whether it's the hotel, the gas station, or the antique store. Thank you.
Additional public questions?
Hi, I'm Morgan. I'm just wondering, in your professional opinion, if you think that sort of the, the corner as it's laid out with the antique shop, is it sort of like a distraction to drivers at all as it's turned in, like how far out the road? Or is like, I know I've traveled that way anytime, and I feel sort of forced through the, you know, through the front of it. So I'm just wondering if there'll be room for sidewalk, because currently set up, and it, you know, there'll need to be any sort of wiggle room, any for that? Maybe for that?
Yeah, so that, I did look at all these issues you're mentioning, the, the space, the, because it's. Difficult to recommend something without knowing that it works. So there is actually room and uh let me go back one notch here and you could see that. I'm actually providing maybe three to four feet of extra pedestrians without compromising. Vehicles. See, vehicles need ten to twelve feet of travel lane. And today they have fifteen to sixteen. When you have wide lanes, it encourages speeding, which is normal by the way, I'm not being critical here, we all. You put any one of us in a very wide road, we're gonna, we're going to uh drive faster. So narrowing the road is one of the oldest and most proven ways of reducing speed on streets. So I think um just by painting this line and giving this sort of appearance of it narrow, and I would go eleven feet. Like twelve feet is the standard width of the, of the lane, I would go eleven feet here, maybe even down. But to answer your question, yes, there is the room, there's plenty of other way to do what you're proposing, thank you.
Uh one more question also concerning that, the stop sign seems to be way higher than like your average sedan sort of like. Feel the view, does that kind of flagging at all, because I have a friend knows that like it seems to be a little higher than the other one?
It is.
And I was wondering if.
And I'm gonna tell you why it's high.
A little through that and I'm wondering if you're not seeing it, because it's not like.
First thing you're feeling observant, uh most people don't realize it. But the reason the stop sign is high, there is a federal uh policy. That says in urban areas, the bottom of the stop sign has to be seven feet above the ground. And that is for someone who's very tall, so they don't hit their heads, basically. Yeah, so it is done according to standards and that's how it is in rural areas, you could drop it down to five feet. Yep. Not, not, and again, I'm not saying that, I'm using the term urban and rural simply. Urban is where you have pedestrians and rural where you don't in the context of my discussion, yep, yes.
Hi, Jennifer Spencer, I'm wondering if there was any talk or investigation about. Some, you want to add maybe the only through the gas station exit. That can't be closed off apparently, is there any room to add that um. Make signs that says um go to the pedestrians or making an actual crosswalk. Into or one exit driveway area from that gas station.
Um, let me make sure. So you're talking up here?
No, through the exit of the gas. There's no, um, you know, I walk often when we went out and up to those crosswalk areas, but. There's no real pedestrians, there's no designated crosswalk area that's needed on that driveway. There's nothing that has a car coming from, let's say twenty-nine. Um and going into that gas station entrance, that's like, go, go to a pedestrian there.
So Jennifer, you're talking about this area? Okay, so it would be. Hmm, not standard, it ought to do with also. One thing, the gas station driveway in this particular situation, um and. And also, I'm not sure if there is pedestrian demand on this side.
Oh sure.
Uh as high as the pedestrian demand on the other side. No, there, there is, one of the top votes, yeah, it may not be as high, but anyway, to answer your question. To go ahead and paint the crosswalk here, I think it'd be confusing to paint a crosswalk. Um let me think about it, so let me look at the plans, at the arrows I have. Uh if your idea has, could be implemented without violating any standard, we'll, we'll take a look.
Maybe the, the other thing is that when people are leaving that exit.
Yep.
From the gas station, you know, they can go in any direction whatsoever to find buildings that.
That's one way.
At all, that's one way.
You're only supposed to.
That's what's always happened.
So I will, I'll take all what you thought we'd give consideration in terms of what else could be done. We did discuss that by the way during the meet days and it was my recommendation that. Based on everything else we're doing, we don't need to do anything at the gas station, but I'll make, I'll take on a little bit, thank you Jennifer, yes.
Um just to add on that with my initial question, um most, I, I would say a lot of us. You think there's not a dash band on that side because a lot of us go up. By the antique store and then just run through the middle of the road to the hardware store, because I'm kind of afraid of that little pocket there.
You mean, you avoid walking this way?
Uh yeah, yeah, a lot, like a lot of lines can feel safer to walk up. Past the antique store of Kingwood.
Okay.
Then cross over randomly in the middle of the road.
They've all traveled like this?
They're going down further this way.
Yeah.
Right? A lot of you?
Cross county as an example.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Uh would it make sense to want, like on the edge? To restrict this space to be at the bar, would it make sense to extend that further to go to the pharmacy? Just so maybe you can get people lined up and not have, they get that like local people?
Maybe, maybe, uh again, what we see here are ideas, they're concepts. Once we go into engineering, we're gonna address all these issues, how to make things seamless, how to make things actually. Attached to existing uh markings or existing features, um so we need to figure that out. Yep.
Do you have any consideration for some kind of slow lights uh that should be activated and have a certain downtime default before they're in it?
So, to actually give you the short answer, it would be. Non-performing with standards because you already have a flashing light. And a stop sign, so everybody's stopping anyway and then if you look at it legally, in Jersey. Once you provide a motion that you want to cross, the car is supposed to stop. Um now you're gonna argue well, some don't, which can be true, but. Being that you have a flasher, a flashing red light and a stop sign. It would be against standards, against engineering standards to put. A crossing, a flash for crossing, you would do that in mid-block. So if there is an area that is not controlled by a traffic signal. Or there it is mid-block, you can do that, but not where you have traffic. That's national standard, but, yep.
I have another question for you also.
You already asked your questions, I'm getting.
Um, has there been any significant thought um given to the runoff situation? Because I've noticed on most of the streets here, it doesn't have an adequate. Uh shore system, as to short speak, that alleviates the buildup of water. And I've noticed there's a lot of puddling on Ray Street in particular. Um maybe because that's on the street, I don't pay attention to, but um it is um. It adds to a problem.
Yeah, so you know, sometimes it gets deep. Yeah, that unfortunately that's not within the scope of what I did. Um there are so many issues out there by the way, you're technical, water, environmental.
Of course.
You know, I was given the task to look at pedestrian safety, um and that's what I did. So these concerns, you need to, they need to be addressed on a different day, different meeting, different venue. I'm not saying they're not valid, but they're not part of what we're here to, but, but I hear.
But um, you know, not to get into your line of work, but the elevation thing comes back to me. Because the elevation is the important thing right now in regard to the water buildup. Okay, and um so that's why my initial concern with the elevation was voiced. Because um you know, depending on what the elevation is, is gonna depend on what the.
Understood, a hundred percent, these things will be vetted engineering wise, we don't pull the sidewalk just like that, we need to know where the water is coming from and where it's starting.
Okay.
Yep.
Much appreciated.
Sure, yes, sir.
I, I'm the 37th member, uh thank you so much for your presentation, sorry for any part, so it's my comments, question would be, I apologize. Um thank you for your work on this, my wife was struck that intersection as well as my dog, I'm so. Glad you brought up, I heart made the uh, the. Over that intersection, I'm wondering if center line automatically is sort of. Secondly, I mean there's a non-compliant stop sign or uh, here's your parking space in front of a stop sign. Um on Ray Street, the intersection with uh with Kingwood, I didn't see it mentioned that here. Uh I'm gonna obstruct somebody with a stop sign for Southbound traffic on Ray Street. And then last, uh given the current state of the like non-crosswalk um in front of a merge alley. Uh what are the concerns around ADA compliance for people with mobility, are you trying to reverse that intersection? Uh into town right now because they have very secure options for navigating that intersection.
For ADA?
ADA.
For ADA, you're talking about Ray St. Bigwood?
Correct.
Yep. So I did not do an ADA compliance analysis, that's a whole different ballgame. That's advised that we go out with a level. Uh measure the angles, the slope, every bend, make sure it's within limits. Measure the slope of the sidewalk coming through it, all that, that was not part of my um uh task. To do this uh this study. Now regarding your other question regarding hardening the center line, there are two ways. Uh to harden them, one is to learn better, I'm just, we don't want to do that in the middle of town. The other one is to uh put with the patients. Like you see in certain places on twenty-nine, I can fall from here, which is also. Uh not designed for a downtown area because, or area because it's home to your business because that creates noise. Every time a Volvo is over, you hear the noise of the rumble strips. So then I'm listening to a question then, when you say a hardening of center line, what do you mean? Yeah, you can send it to me, or on my way out, you know, with the chat. Yeah, okay, and then the uh parking space, the parking, see in New Jersey. When you prohibit an existing parking space, you have bachelor orders. So this is, this requires, you know, some legal work behind it.
So just equate it to thirty-nine, or one thirty-eight point six, uh medicinality in uh.
Well, that, that is true, that is in the very nine-four uh eighty-six, yeah. Um that is, but that parking space has been there for decades. And removing it is gonna require some work. Um I can't just write a report from the other move of parking space. So it does, I'm not telling you which should or should not, I'm telling you why I did not recommend removing it. Um it does have the visibility. If this was a four-legged intersection, that space would become very, very relevant for site business. And you can imagine that logically, if you're driving there and want, uh look at traffic coming from the white side. That traffic may be obstructed by a vehicle, but since it's a D intersection, from a site distance perspective. It makes it less important whether you have a left or a right.
But I encourage you all, we do that intersection because to manage this C R R partners. You're struck with best things here uh further up the uh the stop sign. Because vehicles there are larger than they were historically and that distance we have roughly previous errors, but.
Sure.
Yeah, sorry, there are not.
More, I'm bringing for your questions and your comments.
And Maurice, I think there was another hand out there, so back with, now I feel good, go right again, what's that? There any more hands?
Was wondering if you were able to look into the intersection, similar to second key. Um on the second street, it's very relevant uh.
I, I did not, this is signed, but only for this intersection.
Together they make it more difficult.
They, yeah, but you know, one intersection is not.
Right, and the second uh question is, were you able to consider the traffic line from how you guys.
Yes. So a traffic light, uh let me go back to the data, so I'll give you a quick answer on that.
Just one second, can we get your name again?
Okay, so you see, see these volumes? Uh there is a national, whatever I have a part with national standards, I'm gonna tell you where they are, which. They're in the manual on uniform traffic control devices, this is federal manual that all states must abide. And thousand thirty-nine requires adherence to this manual. So this manual says to put a signal, you need to have at least. Sorry, first of all, but okay, here we go. You need to have at least five hundred vehicles an hour on Ray Street for eight hours during one day. And between a hundred and a hundred and fifty, which you do have by the way, and on, on, on Kingwood. But you don't have the traffic on the stem of the P. Uh I'm sorry, on the top of the P, which needs to be approximately, these are called warrants for a traffic signal, they're very complicated. But it's a defined for you, so more or less, you need to have about five hundred vehicles. You know, even if the traffic doubles, you will not uh meet the warrants for traffic. Yep.
And this is not something that try that is just to have a lot of traffic?
It does actually.
It does, yes, perhaps, we, we don't get the minimum number measured, we cannot have.
That is correct.
Interesting.
Yes. Yes, yes, Jennifer.
Jennifer, yes, uh however, you think this study in our bridges approach?
Sorry, say it again?
We conducted a study of bridges approach.
Correct.
So I would like to argue that that number would grow exponentially when the bridge was open. And actually follow my estimate.
It will never go up, I'll be here in thirty-nine years, it needs to be approximately five to six times higher. And so the, the, and like I said, so my estimate is. That number forty-eight would be nineteen, it could be a hundred. This number ninety could be one fifty, but not five hundred.
Even if the bridge opened or.
Yeah, if you have five. Jennifer, if you have five hundred, you'll have a queue of cars all day long from here to the bridge and beyond. I'm trusting, you're dead.
I don't, I don't see.
Uh look, I hear you.
But I think there's another question, so aren't we? Could you just say your name?
Oh, yeah, sorry, I remember. Um there's a little art market going on, I was wondering what you would have, like your.
What kind of work? What type of work?
An art market.
I think that there's a, there's an event that gets held every so often on, what I call the mix. At uh Strasser's property that draws a large crowd.
You, you mentioned that there were a lot of people crossing around the corner, if you've ever part of it. Um we think it may also shape your perception which side of the road is welcome to traffic because the sidewalk says. This side of Kingwood have, so most of us, we were walking down.
Okay, thank you. Sounds good, thanks. Okay, anybody else? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Maurice, I appreciate it. Okay, our next item of business tonight is a public hearing, this is on ordinance number nine thirty-nine. Uh ordinance number nine thirty-nine reveals chapter four to five of the code titled filming permits. And replacing with a new chapter four dash five, also titled filming permit. Which makes some changes, uh, to make us ready for, uh, filming within the borough limits. So what this is, is Frenchtown is looking to become a film-ready community, there's other communities across. Uh, the state doing this, as well as Hunter County, so that is what the public hearing is about tonight, on this ordinance, uh. Just making some technical changes to keep us a film-ready community. With that, is there a motion to open the public hearing on ordinance number nine thirty-nine?
Similar.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
I think we'll be with the council on the update, I'll say. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, the public hearing is now open, if anyone from the public would like to address ordinance number nine thirty-nine, please state your name for the record. Go ahead, please.
Uh, I'll point where it's free, um, just a question, I haven't heard. I'm afraid, um, if there's any precautions for, like, notice, I'm just gonna be solid, you know, my. There is a film, and we should be sending. Well, I think that's what I does, and that's gonna impact mine.
The answer is yes, there's a whole thing through the New Jersey Film Ready Program, which includes not only, uh. Notification to residents, adherence to local code in terms of sound, noise, things of that nature. But what we also, uh, do is the FBPA is a member of this, and there's, um. Stuff where we have businesses that are pretty outlined, that are work with filters, so that, um. There's, you know, they know that they come into a town, X, Y, and Z can provide food. This place provide parks, materials, things of that nature. With the big Netflix investment in, uh, the former, uh. Uh, Corvam, there's expectation, there's gonna be a lot more, uh. You know, pressures and, and interest in film opportunities in New Jersey, Hunter County's filmed three recent movies. Uh, here have their major productions, and the ordinance itself, it's three days' notice.
Can I follow your path? Number of.
I don't believe there's a cap, but.
But it has to be approved.
It has to be approved, and at the end of the day, I, I don't think we've ever had a, a lot of moves coming at one time for Frenchtown Borough, um. Like, for instance, like Captain Gilmore Two was filmed recently, that was in Reddington Township. And I know, like, our Public Safety Directors actually does a cameo for that. But, um.
Yes.
So just, but, that's the background. Any additional public comment, please, audience? Okay, not hearing any additional public comment, is there a motion to close the public hearing on ordinance number nine thirty-nine?
Similar.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Councilman, please. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, you have sent us, I have, the public hearing is now closed. Uh, we'll now move on to our, uh. Public comment portion of the first one. Uh, comments are limited to five minutes, and the first public comment portion of our meeting. At this time, are there any public comments for the governing body? If so, please just state your name for the record. If you don't think of it, I can always dress as like, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Maureen Taylor, um, my, uh, my, I just wanted to thank you all for your, for the River Fest. Um, the police department was outstanding, the DPW was out of this world. Kurt Beebe gets massive shout-out for the, I mean, he blew us away with his work. Um, the fires, yeah, so it's fun to thank you all for, you know, your support and, and for their, their time and their efforts. Bill Ryan, thank you for being there for us, and, yeah, we're, we're happy to celebrate, enjoying the first year. And we've heard great reviews, so if there's any negative feedback, we do wanna hear that too.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Morgan, thank you.
It was a great, you had it super organized, and Bill and I saw each other the next morning. We walked through, we were, it, we were really impressed with the cleanup and breakdown, like, top notch.
Thank you.
Our local, uh, traffic police said that they had over five hundred cores, which was. Lot, what they're expected, they, they drank everything, they said.
Um, but thank you both, very much.
And a lot, everyone seemed like they ran out of product, which was a good thing.
Yeah, yeah, all of them sold out of the stores, we're very pleased with the turnout, so it was, yeah, we're getting great feedback.
Excellent. Any additional public comments? Okay, and if you think of some again, we have a second comment portion of the meeting. Uh, we're gonna move on to our consent agenda, all matters listed on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the governing body, will enact. Motion for fullness below, there'll be no separate discussion of these items, if discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda. And considered separately, uh. Consists of everything except the approval of minutes, which we're gonna have to take those individually. Does anyone need anything, you don't have the consent agenda? Okay, with that, is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Similar.
Council President, type of motions, is there a second?
Second.
We have the councilwoman, um, Bernhard. Okay, with that, uh, roll call, please.
Councilmember Bernhard, yes. Councilmember Dockley.
Yes.
Council President Etech, yes. Councilmember O'Brien.
Yeah.
Councilmember Outback, yes. Councilmember Warner, yes.
We'll move on to approval of the meeting minutes, the first one is the July second, twenty twenty-five regular meeting minutes. Is there a motion for adoption of the meeting minutes?
Similar, second.
Any, uh, special ones, changes? Not hearing any, uh, roll call, please.
Councilmember Bernhard, yes. Councilmember Dockley.
Upstate.
Council President Etech, yes. Councilmember O'Brien.
Yes.
Councilmember Outback, yes. First, Councilmember Warner, standing.
Next item of business approval of the August sixth, twenty twenty-five regular meeting minutes, is there a motion for adoption?
Similar.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. It's Councilmember Warner, and any questions, comments? Uh, roll call, please.
Councilmember Bernhard, yes. Councilmember Dockley.
Yes.
Council President Etech.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Brien.
Upstate.
Councilmember Outback.
Upstate.
Councilmember Warner, yes.
Moving on to approval of our vouchers, we have our first bill list, bill list number one, is there a motion to approve, uh, payment of those vouchers?
Similar.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Uh, any questions, comments? Not hearing any, uh, roll call, please.
Councilmember Bernhard, yes. Councilmember Dockley. Council President Etech.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Brien.
Yes.
Councilmember Outback.
Yes.
Councilmember Warner.
Yes.
And then approval of bill list number two.
Similar.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Uh, any questions on this? I'm hearing you, roll call, please.
Councilmember Bernhard, yes. Councilmember Dockley.
Yes.
Council President Etech.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Brien.
Yes.
Councilmember Outback, upstate. Councilmember Warner, yes.
Okay, uh, moving on to our resolutions, resolution twenty twenty-five dash one thirty-eight. Approval of a subcontract agreement with Rutgers, the State University of New Jersey. For, uh, work related to age-friendly grants, is there a motion for, uh, approval now?
Similar.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Bernhard. Uh, any questions or comments on this? I just wanna thank Gene, Herb, and all for continuing to work on this, just done a great job on with committee. And I think it's gonna result in some very interesting, uh, policy things for the borough to. To study and look at, uh, implementing in the future as we work towards making our community, uh. Easier for people to age in place. Uh, with that, roll call, please.
Councilmember Bernhard, yeah. Councilmember Dockley.
Yes.
Council President Etech.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Brien.
Yes.
Councilmember Outback, yes. Councilmember Warner, yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-five dash one thirty-nine is change order, uh, six, the final payment to payment construction. For the Hilltop Neighborhood Sanitary Sewer Project. Is there a motion for approval?
Similar.
Thank you, and is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, any questions or comments on that?
Sure. This, this means the punch list is completed already.
Yes. Yeah, we closed out the punch list, and there's a final meeting that the council president held. With a couple of residents that had a couple of concern, and those were ironed out. And this will, uh, entitled us to seek the maximum grant reimbursement, now that we're through our, uh. Our lone horse of the money, and this is going against our grant. Thank you, you're welcome. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bernhard, yeah. Councilmember Dockley.
Yes.
Council President Etech.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Brien.
Yes.
Councilperson Outback.
Yes.
Councilmember Warner, yes.
You gotta get up there.
Next resolution is twenty twenty-five dash one thirty-seven.
Mister, we're gonna, I believe, let you do one forty.
Okay. Forty, just noting a change to the agenda. Um. Professional service contract for Borough Special Councillors. And this will be for work related to the cannabis boards.
Similar.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any questions or comments on that?
I, I do wanna say something, um, we are retaining. Uh, an attorney out of, of the firm that handles our human resources matters for the borough. And the attorney, Dan Legana, comes highly recommended. And has, um, many other municipal clients he handles in cannabis-related matters. He has served to advise us on the ordinance that is, uh, up for introduction today.
Thank you for that clarification, um. And a motion and second, so, uh, roll call, please.
Councilmember Bernhard, yes. Councilmember Dockley.
Yes.
Council President Etech.
Yes.
Councilmember Outback, yes. Councilmember O'Brien.
Yes.
Councilmember Warner, yes.
Uh, moving on to ordinances for adoption, ordinance number nine thirty-nine repealing chapter four dash five of the Borough Code titled. Filming permit, replacing with a new chapter four dash five, also titled filming permit. Authorizing filming within the borough limits, this ordinance is for adoption. Is there a motion for adoption?
Similar.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? I'm hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Bernhard.
Yes.
Councilmember Dockley.
Yes.
Council President Etech.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Brien.
Yes.
Councilmember Outback, yes. Councilmember Warner, yes.
And then moving on for in, introduction and, uh, comment, uh, ordinance number nine forty. This is amending chapter four of the Borough, establishing the license application process for a cannabis establishment. And amending chapter fifteen to establish a cannabis transfer tax, and amending chapter fifty land use to permit the operation of one class cannabis. Micro dispensary retail establishment as a conditional permitted use. Explicitly prohibiting classes one, two, three, four, and six of cannabis licensed establishments. And consumption areas from operating within the borough of Frenchtown, this would be for introduction, before we. Work on that, I'd like to ask Councilman, um, Dockerty, if he'd like to. Say a few things about this, and, uh, just give a preliminary overview of the draft ordinance.
Sure. Um. I'll use the slides.
Yeah, I think that'd be good, okay.
Let me go get that fired up, I'll be right back.
Do you?
You wanna see?
Help to advance the slides?
Yeah.
I have a clicker, which I think will work.
Very good.
I just need to get it started. And then, okay, those words. Now. Yeah, I just, I wonder, pardon the police, I think. I'll be long, I do. All right. Good evening, everybody, and. Thank you, Ron, should be, yes, okay, great. So, um. My name's John Dockerty, Liz, and I went, I lived at, uh, twenty-three, six street. And. So, what I'm gonna do tonight, right now, is review. How we got to this point. So what I'm gonna do is actually go back to the slides. That I presented two years ago, almost to the day, or to the day, as you can see. Uh, and then talk a little bit about, you know, the ordinance itself, what's being introduced, like, so next slide, please. That, yeah, there we go, okay. So this is the community members who participated in the cannabis committee, which was formed by council. To develop the draft ordinance. Uh, and I think, uh, Morton's with us tonight. Right, once earlier.
Yes.
There is, right. Um. And next slide, please. Okay, so taking us back to twenty twenty, as, at the time, there was a ballot initiative statewide. On the, uh, approval of, um, cannabis. And as you can see, Frenchtown voted about three to one in favor of that. Next slide, please. So. Uh, how did we get here? Well, we started in November of twenty twenty, when the ballot measure was approved. Uh, February twenty-two, uh, twenty-one, the public vote signed. The cannabis committee was formed in May of twenty twenty-one. And, um, we did that for two reasons, one is, we wanted to. Develop initially, it was called prohibitive ordinance. Because if we did not prohibit or, or pass an ordinance. Uh, by a certain deadline, then we would be, uh, subject to the conditions that are in the state law. So we didn't feel we had enough time to develop an ordinance. So we developed a prohibitive ordinance, which we passed. Um, and you can see there, August of twenty-one, we recommended to Borough Council. That they, uh, pass the prohibitive ordinance. To give us time to develop suitable ordinance, next please. So we went on that process, um, you know, starting in twenty twenty-one, and working through twenty twenty-two. Uh, July, we presented some, uh, right, initial recommendations. Um, and at that time, we were thinking retail and delivery would be suitable uses. Um, but, you know, we wouldn't, we didn't see cultivation, manufacturing, wholesale distribution as appropriate. And then we had two public input sessions in October, uh, by twenty twenty-two. Uh, here at the school. And next slide, please. Uh, then we continued our work and, uh, presented, uh, finished tracking the ordinance. And then September, two years ago, we, uh, gave this presentation to council. Next, please. So, uh, some of the factors that we considered in developing the ordinance. Uh, we wanted to be compatible with Frenchtown and, you know, what we have in town. At the time, we thought we wouldn't want more than two cannabis businesses, and. Definitely a preference for micro retail. I'm gonna explain more about what that means. Uh, you didn't want, like, consumption hours, areas, you had concerns about hours of operation, traffic. Distance odor, the kind of thing you did to that security. Next. So, based on the input we received. We excluded cannabis from the more for retail commercial zone, next please. Now what that is, is this salmon-colored area, which includes Bridge Street. Basically, if you think about downtown Frenchtown, that's this area here. And to further reduce the potential impact on traffic, and because delivery. Really was not well-defined, and we decided to not carry delivery forward, and, um. We also reduced the number created from two to one. Based on the input that we're receiving, next please. Okay, um, so some things about cannabis retailers, it's a standalone business. Uh, you don't add it to an existing business. Okay, so a path is general store can sell cannabis. Um, next. So we would limit the retailer. The one-way retailer to the R four B transitional commercial zone. Which is this area here, the dark red. Basically, that's Kathy's, the hardware store across the street, and then where Euphoria used to be, that's here. Uh, and then next. Uh, what's called the R four C satellite commercial zone, which is where Bamboo House is right now. Um, but we also included an exclusion zone around existing schools. So that excludes that area for now, this red line that you see here is the buffer around the elementary school. Um, and then last, uh, next please. Would be the R five zone down here. Now, one thing that all of these zones have in common is the availability of parking. Which is, as I, you know, indicated, one of the factors that we considered. Um, next please. So as I mentioned, we created these restricted zones with a five-hundred-foot buffer around, um. The Montessori School, or any school that exists there, um. If it goes away, then this zone could be, um, you know, could be. Um if it goes away, then this zone could be um, you know, could be, a business could possibly go there. Um now, one thing important to understand about cannabis business, if you haven't already heard about this, is that it's. The one business that a municipality can pass and get revenue from. Now, while that's not the main reason that we're considering doing this. Uh it's certainly important for us to consider because you need to look at. Source of revenue like the film ready ordinance. Uh like partners years that we've heard our discussion about, so that we're not a hundred percent relying on property taxes. Uh so it's, it's becoming on us as council. To look at these alternative. Um let me back to the town. Uh next please. The micro business. Why did we think micro business is the way to go? Well, it has to do with scale and footprint. So one of the things that characterizes a micro business is that uh can't have more than employees. Um and it's uh relatively small in terms of its footprint. Which actually fits with our existing retail. Uh footage, square footage requirements. And importantly, at least fifty-one percent of the owners, directors, officers, or employees. Must be residents of Frenchtown or a municipality bordering Frenchtown. And uh one hundred percent of the ownership interest must be held by current Jersey residents. Reside in the state for the last two years, so. But we thought this is important in terms of maintaining local investment in the business and in the community. Next please. Uh and then this is more details about initial limitations on the amount of cannabis. That uh it can, you know, consistent with the small size, next please. Yeah, type of facility, you know, with, one of the things uh, you know, we're making sure it's not going to be permitted in a sacred family hall. Uh detached um. And you know, it needs to be a prop, it's not a trailer or something like that outdoors, it's a proper building. Um no, no displays, uh you know, windows. Outside ordinance, and then we have operating hours which are not inconsistent with many of the retail operating hours in Frenchtown already. Next please. We have odor and noise control requirements, that's. Security is important, um and um. One of the things that is required in this is there needs to be one public access point, so for example. Where the hardware store is and the Napoli's right next to each other. There's that common entrance that uh Napoli's and some of the other businesses share. You couldn't put a retailer in there because they have to have their own entrance. Next please. Um now, you know, uh we are sensitive to the issue of traffic and queuing. That's it. Right, that's been an issue at some retailers, but not all, so we prohibited queuing. And that'll be on the uh, on the retailer to enforce. And we're in the ordinance requiring them to. Typically, what retailers do is they have a waiting area inside if they need to have people wait. Um plus, you know, there's a certain amount of space inside, obviously, so queuing is not. Um necessarily going to happen, but if it does, or if they don't have enough room. They have a system for telling people, like a reservation system at a restaurant, we've seen, we probably use, we give people your phone number. And they text you when there's room for you to come back or you have an reservation. Um and then we have a parking uh requirement in this, well, next please. Consumption, we're not allowing consumption. That's. Uh unregulated sales, gifting is not prohibitive, is prohibited, sorry, that's. Okay, and then just in closing, uh this is an example of what New York Chills looks like. In Lambertville, if you've ever been there, it's a very, you know, attractive place. Now, this is not micro, so it's bigger, just to give you an idea. Um you know, what the contents look like, and last but not least, let me disclose um with a couple other remarks. Um. We passed a resolution tonight to engage this attorney. Who's uh has expertise in cannabis related ordinance. So one of the advantages of the interim period that we've gone through now. Is we've got the benefit of the last two years of experience with retailers. So this attorney's helped us make some changes to the draft ordinance. Not to the substance, not to anything here which I talked about, but to go through it and make sure that our process. And flow is up to date and correct. Uh so that's been a benefit there, so let me talk in closing about. The process that an applicant needs to go through, because I think it's important for people to appreciate. The uh. The process people need to go through, this is not an easy thing to do, and importantly. There are lots of opportunities for input from the community. And oversight of the community about what's going on, what's being done. So the first thing an applicant has to do is fill out an application. And submit that to the borough. That's referred by a cannabis subcommittee which councils formed, they evaluate the application and interview the applicant, they score the application. Then they make a recommendation to council. We recommend that you, as a citizen's applicant, or we don't recommend that this applicant go forward. If the uh recommendation is to go forward, council considers the application. And does its own due diligence and again makes a decision either to endorse it or not. If they endorse it, it's called an endorsement of the application or resolution of local support, sorry. Um then. The applicant has twelve months. To go forward and do two things. They need to submit an application for planning and zoning for site plan approval. Uh and they also need to go to the state then and get their permit from the state or the licensing from the state. Uh then they come back, say, okay, I've got my state license here. Um and then, working through planning and zoning, we would. Look at the retail establishment and have a lot of input on what that's going to look like and how it's going to operate. Um and then including, you see here. Important part of this is. We get the input of the police department during this process as well. As part of this evaluation. Um. Assuming that all goes, you know, that all goes smoothly, then the borough would issue them an annual license, there's a fee for that. So it's quite a process to go through, so in terms of public involvement, participation and input, we have the, here we have the council. Process and then even planning and zoning as well. And lastly, um you know, the applicant or the operators, the retailers, um under a lot of scrutiny and in the ordinance. You'll see, there's a number of conditions which, if the applicant violates those conditions. Council can take action to revoke their license. So if a situation were to develop that we didn't think was, we weren't comfortable with, there are mechanisms for addressing. So with that, I think those are the conclusion of my reports.
Thank you, Councilman Dockerty, thank you. Um. With that, just in terms of process, I'd like uh kind of give an overview and then. Please uh counsel, but you're correct, but should council go to introduce the orders. That would be, uh, a public hearing would be set. And that public hearing, that's where the public could engage on the specific ordinance under consideration by the governing body. Including. Things they might want to see change potentially, things they agreed with, things they disagreed with, that would be the formal process that would be publicly advertised. Where folks could come together in the public and address that specific ordinance.
That's correct.
So uh is there any questions for Councilman Dockerty from the governing body about what was laid out in terms of. The initial draft ordinance that would be. The basically the baseline to start the conversation and it could be the final product or based upon a public hearing. That might result in potentially any modifications. Would be my. I don't, unless there's amendments today to existing texts.
I don't have a question I do have.
Oh, please go ahead.
I just want to thank John for the uh years of work in this project. Um because again, we started as a committee, we gave a lot of public, gave a lot of space for this issue. To um be out in the borough and gave opportunity to uh the borough to be part of the process. Whether it was an involvement on the committee or through the community input sessions. And then um taking a little bit of time to see what our neighbors. Experienced in both Flemington and Lambertville, I think we learned some other things from those. Municipalities taking the lead and um just want to thank you though for spearheading the effort as the chair of the committee and doing. A young man's job in getting us to this point.
Agreed. And I think this ordinance reflects a lot of thoughtful work and uh. It's certainly narrowing the scope compared to uh, I think what maybe there were some thoughts probably that would be uh and uh. It certainly, I think, tries to be mindful of the different things that uh were brought to the governing body's attention over time and. And these facilities are are a whole prevalence on the Frenchtowns uh would be the first place to have a cannabis facility, in fact. Lambertville's expanding their number of offerings and Flemington Borough is going to say. Uh with that, is there a motion to introduce the ordinance number nine forty and to set a public hearing, which would be October the eighth. Hold on one second.
Isn't it October first, it's the first.
So the public hearing will be October first. And it'll be at seven P M and we'll be back at the school, okay. All right, with that is their motion to introduce the ordinance, number nine forty, set the public hearing for October first, seven P M in the auditorium of Frenchtown Elementary School.
Um so.
Second.
You, councilperson, number second.
That's, if you can, just to add one additional point of reference. Uh the council, I indicated that there was a public process here, you need part of this movement to the zoning ordinance. So you're also referring it to the planning board. Uh and the planning board will take up this ordinance at the next meeting that they have to make a determination. Of whether or not the ordinance is inconsistent with the master plan. So that is an additional layer of review, that process, like the public hearing process doesn't start. Until you formally introduce the ordinance which you have now, you've been floating on an amendment. And the ordinance will also become a public record once you introduce it. Up until this stage, it's a draft and it's advisory consultative and deliberative, available to the public. Now it's available to the public and the public has something which, upon which they can comment on at the next meeting.
Thank you. With that, uh roll call please. Excuse me, I'm sorry, we're in the middle of the session, we can't take public comments, so. But there will be another public comment portion shortly.
Councilmember Burkhart, yes, councilmember Docery.
Yes.
Council president, yes, councilmember Brian.
Yes.
Councilmember Obedeck, yes, councilmember Warner, yes.
Thank you. Um next ordinance for introduction is ordinance number nine forty-one, bond ordinance, amending and supplementing bond ordinance number. Eight fifty-eight finally adopted by the Borough Council on December second, twenty twenty. To increase the section twenty cost allocation therein by one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This will still fit within the framework of the Hilltop Streets, but we have to make an adjustment now with our final expenses to section twenty-four. Is there a motion to introduce order some kind forty-four?
So.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman Warner. And the public hearing on that would also be October first, seven P M in this auditorium. Uh with that, roll call please.
Councilmember Burkhart, yes, councilmember Docery.
Yes.
Council president, yes, councilmember Brian.
Yes.
Councilmember Obedeck, yes, councilmember Warner, yes.
Uh new business, uh approve of Maker Alley's request for it in October, twenty twenty-five request. Their motion for approval of that?
Go over it.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Um roll call please.
Councilmember Burkhart, yes, councilmember Docery.
Yes.
Council president, yes, councilmember Brian.
Yes.
Councilmember Obedeck, yes, councilmember.
Yes.
And next, a business approval of a junior fire department member application from Michael Rubo.
Sherman.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Uh roll call please.
Councilmember Burkhart, yes, councilmember Docery.
Yes.
Council president, yes, councilmember Brian.
Yes.
Council member Obedeck, yes, councilmember Warner, yes.
Since I think some of the members of the public do want to uh ask some questions, why don't we move up our, our last public comment portion for council comments and we can take those now. So if anyone from the public would like to address the governing body with any questions or comments, please just uh state your name for the record now, we'll give the time. Uh yeah, thank you. Oh no, it's no, no problem, we're just going to move it up here, okay, so. You're welcome, that's okay, so this. This business, I think, can add into the word.
Excuse me, just give me a favor, I'm having trouble hearing, so maybe you can come to the podium here and speak into the microphone.
I think I'm. It's pretty.
You can hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That was fine.
Yeah, that's nice, that's okay, just.
Okay. So if this business is already done, is happening, is going to happen, or is still. Going to be a discussion with the people on the time, or is already decided?
So, so what happened was the governing body introduced the draft ordinance. The text is published, it'll be on our website, so everyone can see what's in the ordinance and review it on their own. They commented at the public hearing, the public hearing is October first. And that'll be here, seven P M in this room. At that time, members of the public can give their official uh position on the ordinance. Ask questions of it, things of that nature, it'll all be on the public record. And then at that point, the governing body can uh make a determination, they've heard enough public comment, I'm going to close the public comment portion, they would carry it. If the public hearing is closed, the governing body can uh then consider a motion for adoption of the ordinance.
After, so, so a community has the opportunity to.
Yes.
What?
Or, yes. Exactly, whatever, and that would be on October first. Thank you, you're welcome, thank you.
Thank you.
Additional uh public comments, back please.
Um please, the bowling of. How does it find, maybe the ordinance, the two percent tax that we earn? Have, has it already decided what that money will be used for, there'll be property tax reduction, talent improvement, school, or is it just, I don't know, less?
So it's a, it's a two percent sales tax that the municipality allows to levy. The monies would go to the general uh budget and then from there, they'd be uh, whatever, because we don't know what the revenue collection might be yet. You know, ultimately, in conjunction with the CFO and the budget process, those revenues would come into the budget and they'd be allocated for. Needs in the borough, the legislation in the state itself, the law doesn't. Restrict how the governing body could use the, the money, but I think as uh we've been indicating in the past, our intention is to try and have a diversification of revenue sources. To help control property tax. And I mean, to put it in perspective, our reserve for uncollected taxes was up quite a bit in this year's budget, regardless of whether or not the borough collects taxes on property. We still have an obligation to raise and pay those taxes to the county government, the local school district, as well as the regional. Uh high school taxes, so let's say we don't collect a hundred thousand dollars in taxes, we have to come up with that money in the borough budget. And that falls upon all the rest of the existing taxpayers, now we do owe to taxing sale and things of that nature. But it's a tremendous stress on our bird, on our small budget, we have a, a drop off in collections. Additional comment in the back?
Hey, I'm number already, I got a number of questions, so. I spoke positive here, your, the biggest obstacle to like, not smoking in Walhalla and down in Walhalla, so I mean, I think that if the reasons to bear, that will increase. Yes, the reason, those to be able to count. And the other difference is like, if you use three to four percent change, you're not, uh now it's. Like twenty times that much, it's not weapons, right, uh versus what it used to be, although I never, I never research things with young kids and all the possible. So I think we're thinking about, we know, because we know, we think about like modern formulations of it all versus like the Trishy Tom. Uh you know, joint criminal like recreation uh. Uh the city department is like. You mentioned the tax revenue, but if there's a cost benefit analysis, you know, if you don't know what the revenues are, how do you know that the cost of closing on the town, see that uh the revenue will never fly. And also, the refilling, if the town loses the cannabis, I'm confused. And also, the rezoning, if the town believes in cannabis, I mean, this is why it's not a private mall retail at all. Um I have no personal problem with adults who send cannabis to the um. I do have a problem, I do the home for the rezon, our next to uh one. A preschool, and even though it's not allowed by preschools there, you increase the property value of the property, or they're there. To shorten the money, kind of rent, far in excess to put a preschool in tag, uh that a cannabis rezone again, so there are at least some negotiation on some. There the disadvantage, there's down the economic pressures, you know, on the preschool to increase their points of view. Uh aggregate and generate, potentially have to generate practice, and then the uh, we saw that it was for cats and naplins. It's across the street from. French Town Park and the nexus of Napoli and French Town Park is like kids' own, we're going in French Town. And it's just a place that I'm there every day, a little times a day, and a lot of the times it's been here because they're just starting every day uh. And I have to think of that uh impact of the traffic and the type of traffic that goes, goes through those uh. Those differences, again, a lot of those uh like location, the town with the police best, by the way, everything, character of the town. I don't see why the burgish should be opposed to all the retail, just for the alarm.
Thank you for your comments.
I just want to grab, um just say your name again, please, that's very great. Two percent uh tax, it'll bring. Twenty thousand dollars to the business will show a million dollar worth of receipts, but zero for the year, twenty thousand dollars for a million. Um receipts, that's ten thousand customers spending a hundred dollars. For a year and now this business. That's a lot of food traffic and, yeah, drive traffic to that, to generate just twenty thousand dollars for the city to spend. If you want to generate for the city two hundred thousand dollars, that may be a substantial amount of money. There, this micro business would have to turn in ten million dollars worth of receipts. Um for the year. So maybe you're going to, or can consider the increase of the tax or. You know, look at the economic side of a micro business and how much benefit it can bring to town.
Uh thank you for your comments, I can tell you that the maximum sales tax for the law is two percent.
So it's important for the town to have to. We have a business like that with the levels and the risks involved, which have ten thousand uh customers coming into town for the year. Uh just to bring twenty thousand.
In the borough of French Town, every penny increase on the tax rate generates approximately twenty five thousand dollars after reevaluation, just to put things in. Uh perspective, uh Lambertville. Uh spoke to their mayor just to give you context of when they had one of their stores. Uh they were generating at the one store approximately ten thousand dollars a month, sales tax receipts for the city of Lambertville. Out of one of our stores, just put something, that's all.
Their population brand that I prefer is Karen.
I, I don't know what kind of brand Lambertville carries, I've lived there for thirty years and raised my family there and they all went to school and very expensive. Think you're referencing is literally behind the home that I own for thirty years, but um I think what Lambertville has done. Is keeping with the aesthetic of the town, so. If that's what it's generating for now, I think French Town is looking very much to do the same thing, to be able to keep with the aesthetic of the town. So.
The, the only thing, my question is, please, if you can reconsiderate this project, John, please. Because my question is, we need this kind of business in our town. We can't compare Lambertville. Beautiful, by the way, is huge. It's my person, when that's, that kind of story, it's beautiful, but we can't compare French Town with Lambertville population first. And the secondly is, we really need, uh uh, it's a secret, we are in school, you know where we're in. And that, and the topic is about the tax. Somebody knows we bring or we. Time oh normalize the use of trucks. Really, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, but maybe not many people here, I hope many people understand that, I have kids. And I have issue with bikes. In Kathy's, because it's in the front and the official time. Yeah, that's the point that problems with my kid, he was, he was fortunate if it wasn't. But there is a problem with the bike in that store, so the kids, you start to consume. The kids needed and the kids stole. That was the next step, stole and. Also can tell you. That's the next step, so why? Why promote the trust if we need, or if you need, unfortunately, I, I don't really. You know, that means. We can try. As adults, we can try to Lambertville, or even the dealers here, everyone. My friends here, I have a beautiful friend here, and I was, hey, gorgeous, here. You want, you want, so the dealers is so nice here, the consume is so cool here, everybody is happy, and everyone knows. Where you can get whatever they need, why we have to bring? The kids, the easy way to get, and said, oh, no, because there is a rule, there is a age for. How? I can tell you, how, how they jump people can get vibes and solve it. Because there's that kind of, I don't know.
I think it's a, these are good points during the public hearing, to share, yeah. Additional uh public comments?
Yeah, I have two simple questions. I'm highly concerned these days, or not these days, for years, about um. The uh the care and the, and uh of the central business district in French Town. And two things there that I, that I seem to. Just does not, I mean, I'm unable to really get some understanding about. And that is, whatever happened to that dedicated soul? Uh headline that they came with one point. French Town was given a billion dollars to update the uh, the downtown and stuff like that, that's gotta be about a decade ago. And I don't, I've never heard an understandable. Response to that, just because, but the other thing is, I have another one. With the whole show, I don't understand it at all. Why shouldn't it? Why can't we actually do something about the most embarrassing thing that there is? In the, in the, in the business district right now? If that is, that, that um. Right on the bridge, it comes bridge and race, that uh the building, the, the looks like the sixties, that kind of building. Um and uh. There are three major. Uh retail places in there. I, I live right, 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 you look at that every day. I see people at nighttime, a lot of times. Uh peeping in, making notes, whatever, I don't know whatever happens, but somehow. I can't figure out why we can't uh uh. Do something with the most deteriorating, huge part of the central business.
Well, one of the, uh I'll just address the second question first. One of the challenges that we're having as a borough is we don't have a very robust property maintenance code. So the zoning officer goes out, that we shared with uh. The city of Lambertville. But we don't get on the teeth to enforce things, so we're working actually with our uh borough attorney. And we intend to have a new property, or I should say an amendment to our property maintenance code. That would provide some more teeth to go after what I would call negligent property owners in this borough. Uh so, but we don't have the teeth right now to actually take some enforcement action that's needed. We think it's long overdue, I know the council president wanted to get this done in the past. Uh we've seen renters living in deplorable conditions. That we've entered by the uh Department of Health, live wires being exposed, roll sewage backing up into apartments. With no regard, people live like this for months. Uh until we can get their property agencies in, so we're trying to address that, I assume we'll have something pretty soon on that front of the tap grant. We are hopefully going to be nearing um. A good place to go into next year, where maybe done before, uh one of the things that is, the federal government and state government wants to do is get safer to school done. Um we're close, but one of our biggest hindrances has been the lack of response from property owners along Harrison Street. We still have a handful of property owners that have not signed. The access agreements that are in holding up the entire project. This is after five certified letters, this is door knocking, et cetera, et cetera. Um so we have to find a way to either work around them or to use more aggressive legal means. So we're, we're working with the state of New Jersey to find out what would be appropriate, those, those instances, but. That's been a, a real pain in the ass by trying.
And then we have to repeat it for the test.
So trying to figure out ahead of time, the tap now, so we don't flip this dream all over again, so. That's, that's been a hindrance, but I think from a uh background, behind the scenes stuff. Uh we're getting very close to being in a good position to, to move forward on those projects, they're really cumbersome with federal dollars. A hybrid borough has a similar grant system, they're ten years deep as well, I'm trying to get it implemented, it's just, it's, it's very frustrating, but. For us, the biggest frustration was, we were supposed to act this year on Harrison Street sidewalks. And a handful of homeowners. I wish they had property owners, have stood in the way of progress. And therefore their project didn't before, and now we're punting it into twenty twenty-six at this point. So that's been a frustration, additional uh public comments?
Have any major concerns with it, I was just a children. It was an illegal cannabis market that still exists. Pretty sure that's where my kids would access cannabis, I'm not concerned about that, with regulated. Micro retail business that would be on P to D, very concerned about property taxes, and very happy with cannabis, so, so, like, their video. My two questions um would be, one, if we're done, the. The zone that um Natalie and the other still have building is in, um if you allow on this current proposal. Would that building, as it currently exists, be granted a license because of what I saw is that there needs to be one public access point? That building is not like that, so there would have to be a lot of will and interest and a willing property owner. And businesses that would leave in order for that building to become cannabis business, am I understanding correctly?
Yes.
Um my second question is. If we were to adopt such an ordinance and ended up with a business in town. And along the way, we realize as a community that it is not the right shit. What the worst can be have, not just to take a license away, but to amend an ordinance? And what would our rights be as a community, if we're like, in this state, this and. In that kind of scenario, that's just curious, I think it's important for town to experiment and to try things. And just, I don't think the sky will go, and I'm just wondering, you know, what would that process look like um from like the governing body's perspective?
Uh Mr. Ray, my suggestion with you is to wait until the next meeting, you will have special cannabis counsel here that can address that question.
Okay, thank you. Additional uh council, please.
I have two. One, all that about. Cause the asshole, who has landlords who have made their point, they be. Rents affordable and preventing. Businesses, so, and Dorsey and the head are there, um who have made. An effort to make sure that ten were to, among the. So I see the charter or the, the word expansion about five inch storefronts are vacant. My personally, that the people that buy it. The rents are exorbitant and within businesses. Are smart, not going there, not mentioning the town and changes, I think that. Uh ordinance to address that is really hard. Uh so I'm very much sure with the town, and I don't know what leverage, but government. In a borough has to say to them, you can't increase rents, you know. Borough having, people look at that, because that's really idiotic. French Town does not have the volume, even though people, they do that, does not have the volume to pay rents that are too high, because you can't, I can't. So they're not renting there. I think the French is what I'm saying, and we have a really wonderful landlord, and we, uh, committing to. Rents affordable and keeping their living, you know, there's obviously, and you can't, that is something you can replicate that if I law can use.
You have, first of all, the rent control ordinance. Uh and rent control ordinances really are typical for residential properties, not commercial properties. Uh although I'm not sure of that, uh my experience with rent control ordinances have been residential, not commercial. On the commercial side, it's the free market and what the market think they are.
But what we can do is make sure that they are, especially for the residential above. That those apartments are up to a certain standard and that people are not paying exorbitant. Rents for. Places that have serious issues in terms of health and safety.
Yeah, I should have said.
Yeah, so there's the difference in what they're getting on the retail part of it because it is mixed use.
Yeah, and our experience with some of the properties uh has been, people are paying a pretty hefty marketplace rent. But what they get in return is, blow your mind, you know, uh in terms of uh quality of a, of living situation. Additional uh public comments?
Uh I have really. Big concern, it's just that if summer doesn't end until September, for some people are putting out travel, we don't care, who's on the.
I think they read it until September, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Any additional uh public comments? Okay, not hearing any, we'll close our, our last public comment portion meeting, I'll move on to our council comments.
I'm sorry, I. Um I wanted to. Thank um our police department. And I'm looking at the report from the police department, they noted that we had assistance from the state lease, hundred county sheriffs. And hundred ninety prosecutors office, and uh I was downtown, I'm listening over there and. Um you know, we thought it was going very smoothly, so thank you. Again, to the business association, to our. The police department, and for making all that is complicated, and. Went on very smoothly, so I appreciate that, and I also want to say from my own experience, walking around next morning, I was texting. People saying, yeah, there's not a lot of trash out here, they did a good job. Picking up after the trash cans were overflowing, so good, thank you to PPW. Assume you all took care of that, and on Saturday evening, or Sunday evening. Uh just, in the past, you know, what your big day, it's not accounted for the next morning for. Trash contents overflowing in the parking area of the, the park next to the building, so. Thank you again for everybody that worked hard to make that successful and uh run, you know, very smoothly. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Warren? Councilman Nuttig?
Uh just to echo what John said, I guess um I was unable to attend, unfortunately I did travel, but um the amount of messages and. Photos and posts I've seen, thank you both so much for everything you do and everyone involved, really. Um. Fortunately, I wanted to be there for the major, but I heard it amazing. So thank you very much. It's a lot of work.
Was that going with this? Thank you. Councilperson.
Same. Um I know that it was a long day for everyone and um wanna thank. The police department, fire department, OEM, um. Our DPW, Kurt, welcome to the fire. We were thrown in pretty quickly. Uh obviously to FDPA, but especially those two right there for the amazing work and coordination. Mike and Morgan, we really have it down. Um also to the county for the assets that they led to us and the state. Um and I think that's that for that, but I also want to lift up a few events that we. Have going on. Um we have our eighth annual Delaware River Cleanup. We're Frenchtown partners with. The other uh municipalities along the river, the New Jersey State Department of Environmental Protection. As well as the Delaware River Peepers, I think is the organization. Um and the county. Um so that is happening on Saturday, September twentieth from eight thirty to eleven thirty. I will post the link uh and flyer on our Facebook page as well as the website. So that if you're interested in uh signing up, you can do that. We deploy from the benches next to the Bridge Cafe. But we go down to twelve and then also uh to the King with Boat Launch. Um so we have a pretty significant turf and it does uh. Sell out every year for lack of a better uh word there. So um if you're interested, please. Uh look for that link and sign up for sure. The um that we have a county shredding event on Saturday, September thirteenth. Uh which is eight thirty to eleven thirty of the twelve complex. And there's also a an electronics recycling event on September twenty seventh from nine to one. And big news, now accepting most items with a plug, including air conditioners and humidifiers. So that is something new that I notice. And then um. Joe want to, we can talk more about it and not gonna take all of the report back from Bill, but. We work together to submit a park's grant application for Borough Park. Through the county and we are looking to get um a hundred thousand dollars in this application and then on. Not give any more peanut. So you love something, right? That is all I have. Thank you.
Councilwoman Verhar.
Um I just would like to thank her, the new DPW director. Um for submitting a really comprehensive. Record including photos of all the work that they've done in this month and he's committed to submitting a report every month. And he and I will be possibly. Looked, so.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Welcome aboard.
Um to echo what everybody said about the river fest, it's called a rugby, countless hours and. Mike and Morgan and all the volunteers who are just. Grabbing taking help. Uh including the long hour, at least DPW volunteers put in. Sunrise, sunset, you know, so uh thank you for everything in the organization and making it look easy. When it runs that smoothly, it's that level of organization that makes it happen. So thank you very much and to everybody else involved with it, Chris. Bang officer. Um so thank you very much. And then with the grants, our hopes are if we're. Supplied with the grant money for the additional improvements for the park. Um with the through holes and through due process of building a foundation for a skate park. In the Frenchtown Borough Park. So again, it's not just approved yet. The the grant has not been provided. But if it is, we will be exploring. The foundation of a skate park in the beginning of equipment that could be put in that in Frenchtown middle. With the feedback of the skate park committee. And the public. So that's where we are. Thank you for all the work. And putting in the application. And that's it.
Thank you, Councilman. I just want to highlight a few things. Um. New Jersey Motor Vehicle is going to be sending their mobile unit here for Frenchtown. It's going to be here on September eleventh from nine AM to two PM. Uh compliments of our legislators from fifteenth legislative district. They will also be present, members of the staff.
They they will have uh constituent services, so they will be providing resources on. Anchor, stand, uh various tax programs that are available as well as um. Uh information on um any room on power.
On power process.
Yeah.
So if you haven't already, it's it's on the website, more information. The MJMDC mobile unit will be at our guard. Uh if you haven't gotten your real ID yet, it's a good opportunity. That's already booked up already.
Yeah.
I do apologize. We did have, it's not only our mobile unit, it's open to New Jerseyans to sign up for appointments. So the minute that that location was open, it gets filled there.
They do have some other services.
They have a lot of other services.
But it will be in Frenchtown. So if you have some stuff you need to return old plates, things of that nature, they'll be able to help you there. Uh but that's on uh September eleventh, nine to two PM. And uh members of the fifteenth legislative district, your staff, we all can help focus with our state based issues. Uh there's also a Hundred and County September eleventh uh remembrance ceremony. That's at eight thirty AM at the Hundred and County Justice Complex. And I just wanted to highlight the Hundred and County Library and some different resources that are available to pay for in your taxes. Uh but you know, are a great opportunity if you're interested. The county uh library has museum passes and they're available through a partnership with the Friends of the Hundred and County Library. And they have some really great spots, Morris Museum, uh Battleship New Jersey, Constitution Center, uh. MoMA Elwood Park Zoo and you can take these out at no cost for your family. So I really recommend, you know, taking a look at that. Uh it's on the Hundred and County Library website. They also have a maker space that you can reserve and do things. They have uh three D printers. Uh pottery, kiln, silk screening, and this is all available to you at, you know, you already pay for your taxes. But in addition to that, they have um a LinkedIn learning module now as well as a language learning module. So under that, if you're interested in like LinkedIn. They now have fourteen thousand subjects available to you, uh courses that you can take. And get certified in at no cost, things such as C plus plus, AutoCAD, Microsoft Excel, Office, WordPress. Android devices, iPhones, everything. And again, you're already paying for this in your taxes. And they also have um another thing that you integrate again is the language learning and subscriptions. If you pay for magazines. If you pay for uh music, videos, things of that nature, a lot of that you can get through the county library system. At no charge. Uh Hundred and joined with the Morris Music uh Library Cooperative some time ago. And the expansiveness of the volumes is pretty incredible. Again, that's all offered to you. So take advantage. They have free concerts coming up too. Um so just want to, and we'll do a little link on our website to that, but it's uh it's a great resource and uh just want to make people aware. They were at um. Our National Light Out event and uh just highlighting some of these and river best. Uh James Keever, the has been the library director for a few years now. He used to be a state. Uh New Jersey Library uh Director and uh pretty dynamic uh person doing a lot of interesting things for the community. So I just want to share it. Uh any correspondence that anyone wants to address this evening in the packet? Just wanted to know that the uh shared services forum coming up on September twentieth, if something governing body is able to attend, it'd be great.
Thank you.
You can go. All right, with that, um. Is there a motion? It's uh nine o'clock. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Some.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Close the eyes. Thank you, everyone.